So, it's called the meeting to order. Second. Um, Camilla Campbell.
She's here.
Kai Michaels.
Here.
Chris Miller.
Here.
Don Richardson.
Here.
Um, positions or communications over. Anybody have any? With no one signed up, so.
Um.
Um. I'd like to mention something. We went, me and Kai went to that theme.
T O O R Trinidad Outdoor.
By Los Angeles County?
Yeah.
It was, I guess it was funded by Los Angeles County.
Well, with the PAC.
Was it PAC? Yes.
Yeah.
It was real interesting until they got me questioning them and now they're gonna extend it.
They're gonna extend.
They're gonna extend it because.
For two more sessions.
Uh, it was all about outdoor and nothing about downtown and, uh, for the citizens of Trinidad.
Yeah. You know. It was about outdoor, but probably that it was such a small group, I was surprised at how small that group was. Because all those people were from the state, the only local people besides Jared that showed up was.
That girl from, uh, COG.
Uh huh.
And, uh, the girl from, uh, they both were from COG, weren't they?
Yeah, Amanda used to be from the chamber, I think she had her own business, but she was just there. And then I'll call it, of course, Crystal, you know.
That was, that's actually their third.
Yeah, it was actually their first meeting and then when we brought something to their attention, I, I forget what it was, about voting and, uh, somebody they said, it's, one of them said, well, maybe you could bring it to the city to vote. And I looked at him and said, you're never gonna get that. I said, unless you start doing something for the families to stay here.
Good morning.
Morning there.
How are you?
And, and Tom.
You need to get something, I did not tell them this, but for my nieces, it's somebody with small children to keep them here. You, you're gonna be there.
I, uh, and I think you do, you do, you do so much for the city by all this filming and, and all the things that you try to do. But when that, that meeting surfaces again, that is a good movie.
It was, it was a good meeting, it was very interesting.
I just wish that it was there because I would like to have gone as another.
It was a very interesting meeting with them, it was very interesting.
Absolutely.
It's nothing that we haven't.
Found out within minutes.
Nothing that we haven't heard before.
Yeah.
And it's nothing that we haven't heard before.
Other people in that industry should have been there.
Absolutely, we really, except for Crystal and, and the girl from COG, which had some transportation stuff, and not having any of the people that came, there was no one there representing, uh, any tourism or outdoor recreation besides Jared. So, yeah.
But there wasn't the first two meetings.
Yeah.
So, like I said, this wasn't. So, are we gonna know when those meetings are?
I asked to get certified and for the whole board to get, I asked, I, the whole tourism board to be notified.
Okay.
But, yeah, no, it was, it was good, it was lightning, you know, people, people are loving, you know, doing all the love, so, it's good. Okay, approval of meetings of December 21st. Does anybody want to, um, approve the minutes from December 21st?
I'm sorry. Uh, I vote to approve the minutes.
Huh?
I vote to approve the minutes.
I said. I was reading.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Uh, approval of invoices that are in front of you. Uh, which is Felix Broadcasting, Outdoor Media, Mile High Outdoor, uh, the fulfillment postage and the website management.
I make a motion, we pay our bills.
I second, hey, look at this.
And postage is gonna go up again.
I know.
It did already.
Oh, did it?
Did it yesterday, I think.
Was it yesterday?
Sixty-three cents or sixty-two cents.
Wow, yeah, you know, and more emails are going out than ever.
Well, we're sending out, well, we'll get to that, you probably can see it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
There's, uh, fulfillment postage is, is a dollar ninety-two per booklet right now. So, we have started, uh, sending out, they also include their emails on, on, when they're doing their requests. So, we've been sending out a lot more.
Digital.
Digital.
Uh huh.
So, yeah.
Well, if the people into that digital, they save it, even books they save though, but they get misplaced where digital, it's always on their phone, they save it.
So, we're, we're sending out probably, oh, probably seventy or so a month, digital now.
Uh huh.
So, that reduced our amount we're sending out, but our postage is going up.
Right.
And how many hard copies do you send out?
That's what she's.
That's on your fulfillment sheet. You can see that on there. Um.
Two hundred and eighty-one.
Yes.
Very nice.
Well, the more set up digitally.
Yeah, it is low.
The, um.
It is low.
Lessened printing costs also, so, there's a win-win.
Yeah. Yeah, so this month was real slow, it always is.
Yeah.
Um, January is one of our slowest months, but it'll pick up again in March.
Yeah.
We'll get back into the two, three hundreds.
Yeah. I think when we see a number, any number that wants it hard, not just digitally, it's usually an older person because they still like hand things versus. So, those are good numbers, those are good, come here and meet higher numbers. Okay, old businesses.
Oh, I need to take a, um.
Uh, yes.
So, approving the invoices, um, Campbell.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Old business, Sufa signs.
Okay. Sufa signs, update. I'm gonna make on the sheet. Somewhere, I have been in, uh, contact with Sufa. Um, they sent an email to the mayor who was going to present it to council. Mayor, have you heard anything on that?
No, uh, but exactly what do they want from us?
So, the Sufa sign, we, the board, um, opted to outsource the wrap on the board.
Right.
Uh, so it's a complete wrap of the, of the kiosk.
Right.
Um, and you had mentioned that you would, you might, this council might be interested in Trinidad sponsoring that wrap. So, it's a complete wrap and the city can put whatever it is on it.
Let me bring that up at our work session this next, this next Monday.
Sounds good. Uh, delivery is being scheduled, uh, they will actually wrap it when they arrive, when they get here. Um, so.
Now, let me ask you this, on the wrap, just to, and this may be the question that may come up. Because, I mean, we, you know, if we decide that we wanted to sponsor it, wouldn't it be better in the case that if maybe a private company would wanna do the wrap on this?
They could, absolutely, we just gave you first option.
We'll, I'll bring it up.
So that it's representative of the city more than just an advertiser in the city, so.
Cause the one thing I did get from them is, I guess, besides the wrap, I guess there's some other stuff they could put on top and, uh.
Well, that's, comes with the wrap, so the wrap is the entire Sufa sign, it's all one thing. The advertisers locally can advertise on the screen.
On the screen, right.
And the tourism board will also be, um, will also receive any more from that.
Okay, I'll bring it up.
Um, so, they're, uh, looking at installation of probably March, around March the first, the first week in March. Uh, but they'll deliver them beforehand, they will be stored in a Conex box that the city has purchased, um, and, until they get here. We also have to, at the location at Minor's Memorial Park, we'll have to remove some bricks. I've also been in, uh, contact with Bob Just so that we can have those removed because they can't, uh, mount it in bricks. So, we'll have to pour a four-by-four concrete pad. Uh, the one at the Pocket Park is fine, we already looked at that, it's concrete already, so we're good there.
I think you might, uh, talk to Bob about instead of putting just a plain concrete thing down. It's maybe the Sufa sign itself, the little space, there, that could be solid concrete, but the area around it, maybe stamp it like brick.
Well, we're only gonna remove the bricks that we need for the concrete and it'll be level with the bricks.
Right, but you, but you know, if you have a four-by-four area and let's say the Sufa sign only takes up, let's say, three foot by, let's say, two feet, then the area around it would be just concrete.
Right.
And look, but if that area could be either bricked somehow, like they do downtown, or stamped, it would make it look more uniform, I guess.
Right, so that's what the pad looks like.
Right, and this is where.
So, there's only about maybe a half a foot around it.
Okay, if that's all it is, it's not a pad.
Yeah, it'll only be about a half a foot around. Um. I've also talked to Bob about a map, the city map. So, what I wanted to ask you was how big of an, an area we want to put on that map. The more area you have, the smaller the print is gonna be. So, if you want street names on there, you don't want a larger area because when you make it smaller, uh, I think it's the area, the map will be about forty-two inches diagonal. Um, so, the, the more area you put on that map, the smaller your print is gonna be. Uh, but things like, including the hospital, which is way out there, is going to, you know, those things are important.
Sure, I, I, I don't, I don't know about every grid, but normally we have done the core zone and then right at the end of where it ends, hospital, that direction, you know, so that, because we want people in the walking area.
And we want welcome.
Further, they're gonna be driving.
So, how far north, south, east and west did you wanna go?
I think the core zone is a, is just a great.
Core zone area?
Is a great area.
But we need to point to the Welcome Center, just like we're doing to the hospital.
Right.
Unless we, yeah.
Yeah, Welcome Center, Hospital, Fisher's Peak.
Fisher's.
Trinidad Lake.
Trinidad Lake, those are the, uh, the main outskirts that we want posted.
But we can do Simpson's Rest too. Simpson's Rest.
Just give them the idea where those themes are within the city.
Right.
You know, what direction they're on, rather than finding the streets because if they just look, they'll be able to see it.
Which, 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 not to get too outside this conversation, but Mayor, you were talking about the city doing something maybe with Simpson's Rest or you were working on it?
Yes, uh, that is something that, uh, we're actually, uh, we had some conversation on.
Uh huh.
And there'll be some more in-depth, uh, conversation at our retreat coming up at the end of next month.
Uh huh.
But we're, we're talking, cause we do have to.
I'm so sorry.
Um, the county owns part of the road, so we've gotta have.
Wow.
So, we gotta take care of that issue, but then there's the issue with the road itself going up, it's pretty, it's gotta be fixed.
It is.
But we're working, we, we need to work on that this year.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, so, some of the widgets that we have agreed to add were there was a restaurant widget, Facebook widget, access to the city website and the tourism website, anything else that you feel needs to be on there?
Uh, would a Google widget be better than a Facebook widget?
It's entirely up to you.
Yeah, Google would be, and then, uh, you know, Trinidad Outdoor, what he has going on, what Jared has going on should be on there.
So, but that's part of the city website, right?
That's part of the city website and.
Well, I'm just.
The website altogether.
If you're downtown walking though, and you see that, you might just go to our website. And I don't know what happens in the future, but he sure is gonna have trails on his too, so, you know.
Why, is, is his going to be integrated with the city? Cause that was what.
I would imagine it would be.
Or we should.
It is, it does fall under the city's umbrella, but I don't know if it is a separate website.
Do we have anywhere on our website, I should know this, where it attaches to his, like, to see?
Yes, yeah.
He does.
So, it attaches to everything, I, you know, right, so.
Yeah.
Do they go?
Connects to most everything, there's links on everything.
How many widgets can we have?
Um, I think she's set up to five. Uh, but to Don's suggestion about a Google widget, um, Aneesa Roth, the new communications manager, is, uh, constructing or making, I think it should go live in the next week or so, um, a Google page for the city and the city of Trinidad Tourism Board.
Well, and every business in the city should have a Google page, to be honest, I mean, they should, if they don't, they're crazy.
Well, anyway, so, I will add Google on there.
Uh, where Facebook is, tends to be very localized and most people don't search Facebook for where they're currently at, they search Google for where they're currently.
Well, the analytics on, uh, our tourism, Facebook page, they're high, the numbers are high.
Because when they go to their Facebook page, it, when I travel, when I open my Facebook page, everything where I'm at pops up on my Facebook page.
That's because you're, you're, you're paying for advertising to target people in that area.
But don't you think they are too?
We, we haven't been up to this point, are we?
We will, now that we have a communications coordinator.
So, if you're not paying for that specifically that's located in that region, then you don't see it. If you're going into that region, then, and you're, and you're, and you're an advertiser and you're paying for people to see it when you come in, then yes.
Well, I, I just, I, when I go to Las Vegas, New Mexico, and Ross will have mine, those things pop up, everything pops up on there.
Because people are paying for you to see that.
And that, and, and that's, that's good, but the people going on the Google, having Google pages is just starting to catch on and everyone knows. And I agree.
But when we.
With me. And, you know, I, I agree, everybody should get one, they just don't have one yet. And I think maybe starting out with Facebook, we could change it later.
I actually disagree, I think most people, Google is your main search engine that you're looking for if you're searching for anything and you put it into your phone, it's gonna go through a Google search regardless. And so, Facebook will pop up in that search, but Google won't pop up on a Facebook search. And so, yes, this town as community tends to run on Facebook, but Facebook is a much older demographic. And in other communities, that's, that's not how the vast majority of people.
They're searching and they are popping up on Google and their, our, our city website is coming up, different things are coming up and that's where they're going to.
I mean, because when you're in a new town, I don't search, say, say, Facebook and most people don't, you know.
No, I do Google, but it pops up.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, is Facebook will pop up in a Google search, but the reverse does not happen.
Something you might be aware of, I was watching the news yesterday and, uh, the Senate is actually considering breaking up Google.
Yeah.
So, who knows what could happen with Google.
That's interesting, why, Mayor, with Google, did you mean?
It's a monopoly.
It's a monopoly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think those search engines are so ingrained, they may break up other elements of their company because it's also Alphabet is a larger, huge, I mean, just like Amazon isn't just what you shop, it's Amazon Business Services, which is massive. I mean, every time you put a credit card online, you're actually using Amazon services, whether it's through Amazon or not. Google is similar, but in terms of the search engines and how we use it that way, um, I don't think that's likely to affect us anytime in the short term. And in the event that they do do anything, I think they're all getting paid way too much from Google anyway, they're not gonna pass anything like that. Um, that, then, you know, we don't break something before it's broken.
Well, I think.
I don't know what that.
Question is, lack of, of, I guess, understanding on some of it. If, if it's somebody standing in front of one of our things, Facebook is more localized, would they be going to that and, and finding things local rather than needing Google, which is?
I actually disagree, cause Google.
I'm just, I'm asking a question, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, but all, Google, you also can target geographically. Um, but the other thing is that Facebook, like, if you have a business page on Facebook and you have a page in Google, um, Google pushes out your data to anything else that's looking for it. So, all of a sudden, like, this has happened to me as a business owner, my hours on Facebook or on Apple or whatever would randomly change. And I would have, if somebody would tell me, hey, are you closed at five, I'm like, no, I'm not closed at five. Because I had a page from my Denver location that did close at five, but my Summit County location didn't close until ten. Well, Google randomly su, or don't Google, other, so Facebook and all those other search engines randomly populate from what's in Google. And Google was confused because I have two different websites. And so, it took somebody who does a lot of the SEO stuff to explain to me that was what was happening. So, I had to differentiate my websites so that I would stop having that problem.
See, I don't, I don't have that problem, I got.
But you probably only have one website and one page, I have multiple locations.
I have my website, I have my Facebook page, I have my Google, I have my Instagram, I have them all.
But they all communicate to each other, the, what I'm saying is that I had two different business site, locations for my one business. And because of that, it would get confused. And because, like, Facebook automatically will update data from your Google site and whatever's the most recent. So, your Google site really is your most important site, but making sure all your other information is valid, it sucks through it.
Which ones, what did we say a minute ago, the five?
So, you have, um.
City website, tourism.
Events widget, a restaurant widget, Facebook, uh, access to the city website and the tourism website, and then the Google widget, so that's five.
That's right.
Um, so, Google instead of Facebook or plus Facebook?
Plus.
Plus.
Yeah, if they're both on there, then.
Right.
It's moot.
Yeah, I mean, locally, that we, they hit some Facebook, it's, things are going on in town, people just go to Facebook, they don't go to newspaper.
Uh, we could also, we have an expert, now, city staff, you know, ask her what she.
She's the one that recommended a business page for the tourism board.
Yeah.
And she's really, really very highly qualified and knowledgeable on SEO and all things social media, she's really good.
Well, that's great, it's really exciting, we'll have it for the summer then. Okay, canyons and plains update?
Uh, so, the canyons and plains task force, heritage task force is working on two projects right now. They're working on the Reimagine Destinations Program and the Reimagine Industry Association Program, which are both CTO programs. Uh, they received their grants for both of these programs, they received fifty hours of mentoring. Um, we have been meeting with, um, Andrew Grossman on almost a weekly basis now because we have both of these programs going on. But the project itself will build, um, local resident awareness and tourism and economic impact of tourism. It'll increase the promotion of canyons and plains region, um, it'll identify opportunities to advance visitor experiences. And we're working real close with all seven counties, so, Los Angeles County, Bent County, I mean, um, Prowers County, you know, all the seven counties in the southwestern region, southeastern region.
How many people are in that group?
Uh, probably twelve.
Nice.
Yeah, so, we're doing a lot, um, this Santa Fe Trail Scenic and Historic Byway, uh, also received a, um, grant from CTO under the Canyons and Plains Regional Heritage Task Force umbrella.
Wow, that's huge.
We're currently developing a new corridor management plan, uh, we have somebody working on that, we just got the draft yesterday to review that.
And so, would they, would, does that mean every, like, in, on Highway twelve, the?
No, this is Santa Fe Trail.
Okay.
This is, this one's Santa Fe Trail. Uh, so, Santa Fe Trail, what we're doing on theirs, we're identifying signage, uh, for national byways, making sure that all that signage is up. Um, Santa Fe Trail Association has signs up, National Forest Parks, National Parks has signs up, so, there's a lot of signs between here and Holly on the Santa Fe Trail.
I was gonna ask, so that would all be east of town, there'll be signage here?
Uh huh, yeah, there is now, uh, but some, we've lost some of it, some of it's old, it's re- replaced, things like that.
Is where from a county part of canyons and plains too, or they're, they're a different district?
They're at Mystic Sanwas Valley.
Okay.
Now, the sign is just, what, what, what kind of information is on the sign?
Identifying the byway, uh, identifying it as an American byway.
More aligned that way.
Daughters of American Revolution, like, different sites where they have monuments erected.
I don't think that we're the same as everything.
National Parks has signs up to identify the, places like, um, the Blue House, the, right here, we need a sign, we should have a sign there, I think we do. Um, and then out on the byway, so it'll go from here towards, and, out east. But there's five different associations or organizations that have signage.
Scientificity, information.
They just identify.
I'm not saying what the lines, but talking about identifying the communities and I thought it was broken down.
Yeah, I've never been comfortable, we, she, um, Dawn had just mentioned and, and I echoed that. I, I was never comfortable in the initial stages when they set up those regions, that we were canyons and plains. Cause I thought we had mountain views, like, right after us do it, but not us, but they did it.
I was at, I was at that meeting in, in Denver when they introduced.
The new map and the new regions.
Oh, yeah.
You guys questioned it, I questioned it.
We all questioned that.
It was, it was kinda nuts.
We got nowhere.
Which, which, you know, I don't know when or who or what is the right way to address it, but I have always thought, and those signs have been there forever. I mean, at least thirty-plus years, is the entryway signs, but both from the north and south, they make us look like a desert that, Welcome to Trinidad is like a sandstone. I, I always thought there should be like historic, uh, you know, our historic downtown buildings at Welcome to Trinidad versus, they look like Scottsdale, Arizona.
We basically have the Eiffel Tower behind us.
I know.
Right, that should be on everything, to be honest, I mean, I'm from Utah and the, and Delicate Arch is on everything, everywhere, even though it's in the desert, it's everywhere and it becomes ubiquitous with the state and this is just as iconic.
Yeah.
And it should be on everything.
Yeah.
And it's spectacular.
When this was brought up at that, you know, when they checked, when they showed that new map, you know, the thing about it is, we're in a u, a unique area.
We have plains and mountains.
We're on both sides, so it's, really, where do we fit in?
We should have our own little.
So, so, Mayor, those signs on the entryway, both southbound going north or northbound going south, either way, what, who's responsible for those signs? And they've been there for a long time.
What type of signs are you talking about?
Welcome to Trinidad and it's a sandstone sign and it looks like you're in the desert and it says Trinidad.
Right.
And they've been there thirty years at least.
Right?
Thirty, thirty-five years at least.
Exit eleven, exit, uh, not to eleven, exit eighteen, something like that.
Yeah, it exit, when you're coming in and I always say, why, it should be like, get ready for historic buildings, Welcome to Trinidad, why do we have desert?
Like Colorado signs?
Yeah, the big Colorado.
No, no, they're, they're a local sign, I will take a picture of it.
You're a gravestone sign.
It's a gravestone.
Okay, yes.
It's like a marker.
Yeah.
And it doesn't represent Trinidad at all, so like, if I was out at eighteen or wherever it's at, driving in and I saw, you know, cool, cool buildings, I would say, oh, what's, oh, yeah, that's coming in, maybe, but it looks like a desert.
It's also very washed out.
Yeah, it's been forever a long time. Okay.
Okay.
Got all that out, okay, Welcome Center update.
Okay, Welcome Center update, um, visitation is real slow right now, obviously. Uh, volunteers are currently competing for brunch at Rameho Park.
Nice.
Cutthroat, right?
With a volunteer recruitment program. So, basically, anybody that, you know, whoever recruits the most volunteers will get these two tickets to Rameho Park lunch, which Jared donated uh, for Mother's Day, so.
Where's Rameho Park?
They have brunch every, yeah, it's in New Mexico.
Rameho Park is a Ted Turner branch.
And they do it every year, they have a brunch every year.
Um, one for Mother's Day and then they have another one in September. So, he donated, and they're pricey tickets, they're about a hundred bucks.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, he donated those, so they're, got a little competition going on there. Our monthly volunteer meetings continue to feature a local business or a resident as a sponsor. Uh, so, we invite, you know, businesses within the communities, um, restaurants, right now, we're going through our restaurant list since we have some new restaurants, um, to familiarize the volunteers with what they have to offer, their hours, their menu, their, whatever it might be. Um, and so, they come in and they, they usually bring little goodies for the volunteers and then we continue with our meeting and stuff. So, it's kind of a neat thing, the volunteers really enjoy it. Um, the CTO has not yet responded to the letter from, um, city manager to reinstate our state funding for the Welcome Center. If that letter was sent on December the eighth, so we're still not, our fingers crossed and hoping, it's about eighty thousand dollars, is what we should be getting. All the other Welcome Centers have received that with the talk about relocating the Welcome Center, I'm not sure what they're thinking. Uh, but it, it should be, in my conversations with the CTO director and my manager, um, she said there should be no problem, but don't know when we're gonna get it.
I just, just a question on that, I remember I called you the other day about decrease or increase of numbers of other Welcome Centers across the state. Uh, can you give me any hard data on increases from, or decreases during the COVID, and then increases to last year? Cause I will probably be needing that information coming up.
Visitation, uh, compared for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-one and twenty-two.
Nineteen nine, nineteen twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two.
And, and even with that, Mayor, you know, with the increase that we, that the school and a few people have done in traffic to Trinidad due to the Fisher's Peak, that might be something that could be added to that letter, is that, you know.
A letter's already been sent.
Oh, I'm, okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, so, I will get you those, Mayor.
Please, thank you.
Um. A volunteer appreciation package came from the state, the goodies for the volunteers, we haven't seen that in the five years that I've been there, so, they did get some funding, tourism did get funding from, you know, on the state level, so, they now have a few dollars to do some things for the volunteers and the, and the Welcome Centers.
And rightly so, because they work so hard, I saw what their budget was and when I talked, I couldn't believe that, that's all their budget was for the state of Colorado.
The CTO office is also purchasing shirts for the volunteers, which hasn't happened in many, many years as well. So, they've, I got all their sizes, I sent those in and they should be receiving their shirts soon. The spring managers meeting, which I will be attending, will be in Breckenridge, um, on April tenth. The spring managers meeting, which I will be attending, will be in Breckenridge on April 10th through the 12th. The travel shop is continuing to perpetuate its operations with about $6,000 in the bank and about $9,000 in inventory, which is really good, because I only started out with $5,000, so it's doing really good. We've increased the inventory.
What are those numbers again?
I started out with $5,000. Right now, we have about $6,000 in the bank and about $9,000 in inventory.
And what is the hot sellers?
Hot sellers are actually Trinidad bricks. So I make these little tiny Trinidad bricks.
They're so cute.
And I have some for you, by the way, for the shop. They're little tiny terracotta bricks that I make, and I stamp with Trinidad on them. I make the bricks just by themselves. And then I, I made some magnets out of them, so I have some magnets as well. Those are the hottest seller.
Do you ever make Christmas ornaments out of those?
Yep, we sold probably about 20 of them this year.
Oh, I like a Christmas one.
The other hot seller is a little wood cut wolf and a bear. So the theme of all of the, the items that are in the shop are kind of mountain-y. So they're wild animals, bears, wolf, things like that. I have those types of stuffed animals, all those kinds of things. Another thing that's really a hot seller is metal wall art. So they're flat pieces of metal that are cut out in different shapes, and those too are bears, wolves, you know, moose, things like that. I didn't have moose for a long time, and then we spotted a moose, and I said, heck, I'm gonna sell moose, and they go like crazy. So, yeah, it is pretty neat.
Mountain lions are gonna be pretty soon, those pictures people are posting on Facebook of local mountain lions.
So that's about it on the welcome center.
And that's the travel shop?
And you had asked to put sunflower city on the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, and I'm glad the mayor's here for it. So I still wanna move forward and get, you know, consensus that we could start referring to Trinidad to have like, so if you go around Trinidad and the surrounding areas, anytime in the summertime, there's wild sunflowers everywhere. People were posting them last summer, they were crazy last summer on all the things. Is that way we could do things like sunflower days, and it would be a whole month worth of coming to Trinidad. And we could pass out little packages that have sunflower seeds, and local residents could grow sunflowers, since so many have it. Just a, a reason that people go and see the trees changing, right, at a certain time of year, and they try to do it. But if we, if, we have like six weeks of sunflowers, you know, we have, we have sunflowers. So if it could be something that would be another marketing opportunity, let's take a Sunday drive, and let's go through the country and look at the sunflowers. This past year, it was crazy the amount of sunflowers we had.
One of the best.
We talked about it once before, mayor, a couple months ago when you were here.
One of the best experiences I ever had is I was in France, and I, and we rode our bikes through lavender fields in the Loire Valley, and it was amazing. And here, the sunflowers have a similar feel, right, cause they're everywhere. And especially if you're like riding your gravel bikes, they're pretty relaxed rides through the hills, and it's beautiful. It's such a lovely way to experience our community.
And if, I, I don't know if you, we, if you would want me to start something and send it to you, or something that we could work on as a group. But I think, you know, every place has their, like, surely their state of Colorado has, has their flower, and everybody's kind of got the thing that they're most known about, if it's a certain tree, or, or, or apples or something. And although we have good agriculture and stuff, we don't really have like a signature something, and that would give us something. It would just be something extra to add to our area.
I think, you know, something like this would be ideal, and when we are having our retreat, it's gonna be the end of next month, we're gonna have a, probably an hour discussion on what does it look like that makes Trinidad, will make Trinidad a destination? Something like this, I could bring it up and see what the staff and what council's thoughts are on something like this. Because you're right, I think if we can identify ourselves with something in particular, it would just add to the, to the flavor of Trinidad and the surrounding area.
And because they grow so easy, it would be fun to, you know, when you drive up the streets, to see people with sunflowers out on their porch, you know, and we could do a big, you know, so.
Now, the, the people out east, they didn't have anything like this already in place?
Nowhere in our county that I know of, and I've not even heard of it. My idea came from what you're talking about, is taking a bike ride out by Sarsio Canyon and seeing, it was crazy the amount of sunflowers that were out there this year. People posted pictures of them all over. And then I started noticing sunflowers, and every once in a while you'd see a house with sunflowers going by. And I'm like, well, wouldn't that be cool if everybody had a pot with sunflowers growing or something in town? It would be really, it'd be.
And the lake, the south, the lake had.
Yeah, and the lake did too. The lake had.
The lake had beautiful sunflowers.
Southeast region rural philanthropy days adopted the sunflower as their.
That's what I was thinking about.
Oh, rural philanthropy days, yeah.
Hopefully that, that doesn't create an issue, hopefully not.
That's like the region, that's like a day though, or a week.
Yeah, that's only like a day or a week, or three days.
I guess that would be the biggest thing, is trying to identify the, the time of the year that they will grow, I guess.
Yeah, it would be like the very end of July through September, right in there, August through September. But yeah, it would just be, and since the rural, yeah, and since the rural philanthropy days is within our county, and we're the sunflower county, it would make sense that we're sunflowers, cause there, only there are three days promoting it.
Is there any other flora that's?
No, the state does the blue flower.
The columbine.
The columbine.
But that's usually in the higher mountain.
Yeah, and it, it's not here, you know, but the sunflowers are here.
Um, I'm on the steering committee for the rural philanthropy days. I can ask if they would mind if we use the sunflowers for a monthly, or for a, a destination. I don't think it would matter. I mean, that's like a symbol for an event, not for, you know. In fact, they would probably say, go to.
Oh, yeah, we wouldn't really need their permission. It's just something we adopted. But then, like, all the, all the biking and that, you know, if we had pictures of the bikers going down with sunflowers on the side of the road, you know, those, cause they're so easy to take, cause they're everywhere. Okay, so that's it.
All right.
Okay, new business, elevation outdoor advertising review.
So in front of you, you have a copy of Elevation Outdoors. So I received some communication from the marketing person on advertising in Elevation Outdoors. It's in your packet, it's at the top, it says, reaching a front range audience from Hannah Cooper. And attached to that is also the information on what the advertising costs and different things like that, so. For 2023, it gives you options for the, you know, for our budget. Full page ads cost $9,995, and it would be in all files of their issues. There's also half page ads at $6,875, quarter page ads in every issue, et cetera. So all your print costs are there. It also has the analytics for print circulation and types of things, averages 3.25 readers per issue. The readership demographics is also included in your packet. But one of the things that she mentioned that I thought was pretty exciting is that the editor is gonna be publishing a March-April issue that features gravel writing on the cover. And he will be doing an editorial on it about Trinidad specifically.
Wow, well, that's huge. You know, I was torn about that when I saw those rates, because I do see this, I do see this magazine all the time.
A lot.
A lot.
Something that's bugged me for a long time, this is when I was in the Southwest Chief Commission, is that anytime they identify the front range, it's only Denver in that area. And I, I was trying to introduce at that time that they need to break up the, what they call the front range. Cause to me, the front range starts at the New Mexico border all the way to the Wyoming border. So I think that they need to somehow start identifying southern front range versus the northern front range. Cause anytime they say the northern front range, they think that we're included in that, and we're not.
Yeah.
And I think that would be good that if we do, you could do some kind of advertisement in there that you would recommend Trinidad in the southern front range.
Yeah, that's such a good idea, mayor, is that, that is such a good idea. Are you gonna go to the cold northern front range or the warm southern front range, what we're gonna say?
Oh, I was thinking, I think the front range is determined based on population. Like, 80% of the population lives between Pueblo and Fort Collins in Colorado.
But you're talking about, you're talking about a range, you're not talking about a population, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but I think that's why that gets determined as the front range, and we get left out is more because of numbers of people, rather than like the physicality of what it is. But I don't disagree, I think we should.
I wish the entire statement started.
Well, I mean, what can we do about that? Advertising, including our birding areas. We have a lot of birders that come through our area for, for something like birding. And this is, this is an outdoors magazine, and we have, we don't have skiing, but we have so much else that we could offer for outdoors.
Yeah.
But there's a whole section in here on Pagosa Springs, which also does not have skiing, really, I guess.
Right.
Kind of, right? And they show them snow shoeing, and they show them in the.
And this is a winter issue, so, you know, that's the highlight.
So this publishes six times a year, five times a year?
What I do with it.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
There's March and April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, and January and February. So every other month.
So six times, so.
But because it is outdoors, I do think we should focus it on, you know, hiking, biking, kayaking, hunting, fishing.
Yeah, right. So, so what I'm understanding is, because it's about $10,000 for six issues, it's about $1,600 an issue for a full page. Cause that way it makes it easier for me to digest.
The half page ads though, I mean, if you look in here, here's a quarter page ad, it's a pretty nice size ad.
It's a big publication.
And.
It's size.
So even a quarter page ad has been.
Like Silverton, Colorado has a half page ad, or here's Ipon Pass has a half page ad. You know, that's a lot of ad.
That is a lot.
So, I mean, we, I think if we did half page, maybe a full page on the one where we're the gravel, the gravel one.
Can you do that?
If it's a package, my thing would be, if it's six, $7,000 for six of them, that means it's 1,100 or 1,200 for a half a page. Or 1,600, for us to make sure you notice us, I would, I would just say, I'll pay the $400 more and get a full page, so that we're noticed.
It's 6,800 for a half page. Or nine, or almost 10,000 for a full page.
So in one issue, a full page is 2,200, a half page is 1,450.
But that's without, that's without doing the whole package.
Right, that's just one issue.
Right. So if we bought the package, it would be like $400 difference from having a half a page to get a full page. And a half a page itself is 1,200, without having the whole thing, it's 1,400. So it's like, you know, really great difference, so square inch, how much it costs per square inch?
Like you get a real good deal to, to do the whole page.
I just see so many beautiful pictures locally for us.
My big question is who's gonna do the ad, cause it's a big ad and it's.
Yeah, we have a new person.
But we don't know what her skill, I mean, we haven't seen any of her stuff, like, what is she gonna pitch to us?
Well, this is the trial run, we got to, we gotta do.
It's a big trial run.
Well, but who, who else can we do? If we get, no matter what. We do, but it will take a while to get them going.
The RFPs that you sent out for marketing and advertising the agencies that respond to that said that they could do separate, you know, they could design ads for you if we were looking at something like that. I mean, it'd be an additional cost versus having somebody in-house doing it, that then you'd get that professional design.
Well, I still would like to see what she could do.
Yeah, me too.
Because, I mean, doing graphic design is a technical skill, doing like actual marketing design is more of a creative skill, and they're not always the same.
No, but I still would like to see what she can do.
Yeah, because I understand from that. From when she was hired and what they were doing, a lot of that, it impressed the people. She, you know, I, I agree, she was a graphic artist. At least look at what she's got. When is her deadline to?
Uh, there is, I'm not sure she mentioned it, she said.
It'll start when we decide to start, wouldn't it?
Right.
March, April, close, 213.
One for gravel grinding, so, I mean, obviously the ad would depict gravel grinding.
They probably need it in the next couple of weeks.
Right, it, it says, Art due 215, space, close, 213, March, April.
I wanted to clarify what you said about this magazine. Were they willing to do an article on Trinidad free that was big, or get the front cover?
No, it's free. The front cover will feature gravel writing.
Okay.
And there will be an editorial inside about Trinidad specifically.
Can we get, just have her, you know, mock-up one? And see what she's got.
Can we, um, I think we need to also, like, this is gonna take time to plan each of these issues, but I think we also need to probably hire a photographer to get the shots that you need for each, and have a plan for each issue, like if we know what's in each issue, so we know. Like, the, the ad itself needs to look really consistent over and over, but the image can be of fishing, it could be of kayaking, it could be of each one, right? And that, I think, is really, really important.
Is that library of, of pictures that you have, that have some of that?
It does, and I also have access to some of the rad photos that were taken on the route out in the county. Nice photos.
I, I've seen, I've seen some of them, and I think everybody needs to see the tremendous amount of really good pictures we have of the area.
We have a big library of photos. I said, we have a huge library of photos.
Yeah, yeah, I think everybody should see them, just so you know what we have.
Okay, so what does everybody think about this, advertising ones, getting the gears? What do you think about, help and Marty here?
So I, I was looking in the back there, readership, and they have, like, their active outdoorsy, like 94% enjoy hiking, 30 do road cycling, there's a bunch in, 57 mountain biking, 45 snow shoeing, whatever, the numbers. A lot enjoy fishing and drinking outside. It's my background, right? But anyway, so, and I mean, their demographics are also really high, they're college educated primarily, well-educated, and have, you know, pretty high expendable incomes. So, you know, thinking, taking that into consideration, I think we really need to think about how this looks. But I do think this is a good connection. I wish we had the demographics on the rad, because my guess is they overlap, and it would give us a better sense of how to target this. But I do think this is, because, you know, they also say, how many of them take weekend and long weekend trips? 89% of them. That's really good for us, because we're that long weekend trip from the front range, which is where they're targeting, right? So that's really good for us, I think, in terms of like a target.
Well, something that, you know, I heard, this is several months ago, is that it's such a tedious pr- you know, process to get from Denver all the way to the Western Slope, it's a five or six hour drive versus the drive down here. I think that would be ideal, and then the other problem that's gonna arise in the next couple of years probably is that I-70 is going to be, they're going to redo some of the highway. So it's gonna create even more problems for people traveling that area, so we would be more visible and more likely that people wanna come possibly down here.
Well, and that might be something for us to consider in the ad, like your alternative to I-70 growth block, or something of that. Because that's one thing, that's what I've been trying to sort of promote for a long time, like, it's easier to get here, we have better weather, and we have everything.
Everybody tells me that when they come down out of Springs in Denver, that's, that's, they're coming south for the day.
So you can put like your alternative to, you know, the Western slope or something like that.
I don't think it'd say Western slope, you might, those are kind of fine words. Alternative to I-70 is the better way there.
So I, I agree with Si, I think we make a big splash, we're gonna get it in this, people that are already seeing and everything else, do a full page, do a nice ad, and I, what is her name, I don't wanna keep calling her.
Anisa.
Lisa.
Anisa.
Anisa.
Anisa, that's why I can't remember. Get Anisa to do something, you, and maybe even get some input from Jared because of what we're pushing, and.
Okay, can we do a full page while they're, that one month, and then go to a half page after? Will they let us do that?
Yeah, you can do it issue by issue.
It's just cost a lot more money.
It costs a lot more money.
Yes, that's why.
That's what I, one.
I make a motion, we, I, I'd like to make a motion if I can, the, we go with a full page. The, you know, we, this is the perfect place to push outdoor, and, you know, hopefully we'll get some people downtown with it. But still, that's, it gets them in the area, and then we gotta pull them in.
Marty, at what point are we gonna be able to advertise Fisher to Peak?
We can already.
Oh, yeah, I just talked to Crystal, she said we can start.
We can advertise. So we have new hiking trails, we have new mountain biking trails.
There's some, this is actually where we should get some photos. I don't know if you. I don't know if you have any, those trails up on Fisher's Peak are beautiful, right? And to get some nice photos up there of people hiking, unfortunately without their parks, but with the views behind them would be really, really special.
And Carlos actually has some photos already that we could purchase from him. They're already done, you can look at what he has and.
Does he have people in the photos? Okay.
The other area that has a beautiful, they're my decent minority has it is from the campground up at Fisher's Peak. I mean, up at Trinidad Lake, that hits the lake and Fisher's Peak.
Actually, I have a really nice kayaking photo that has Fisher's Peak in the background.
With my, yeah, my photo.
I've used it several times already. It's a nice photo because it has both state parks and it's in our Colorado Tourism Office Magazine that we did this year. It's got four photos and one is in a kayak, on a kayak at Trinidad Lake State Park and you can see Fisher's Peak in the background and I put a little arrow that says.
And he's raising his paddle, so it's like outlining Fisher's Peak just perfectly. It's a nice photo.
Yeah, and just to think of what a deal that is, is Marty said that it's $2,200 a page if you're not in a, in a packet. So 2,200 times 10, 22,000, it costs 26,000 dollars if we bought the ad separately versus 10,000. I mean, what a deal.
I made the motion that we, we purchased that. I don't know if we need to add in the motion, then Marty, you and Jared work with Anisa.
I second. And we're joining the package?
Yeah.
Full page ad or half page ad?
Full page.
Full page?
That's the motion anyway.
You have a second?
Second.
She seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
All right.
Let those wheels roll in.
Yeah, because I need to get to work real quick.
I think that's a good one.
Because you know what, we have, we have this magazine left so much at the hotel that my head housekeeper a few weeks ago said, are we putting this magazine in the rooms too? Because it's a free guide and they really, they're distributionists, they put it everywhere.
60,000, I think, is what it is right now.
Okay, okay. Art Cartopio Museum CTO Grant.
She's asking for a letter of support. I have a standard letter of support and she gave me all the information on it. So with your approval, I'll go ahead and write that up for her. I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Tidbits, Tidbits is offering the same rates that they had last year for this same ad at the top of the page in their Tidbits magazine. It's a banner ad with the QR code for the website and it has the tourism logo on it. Do you want to go with that again for another six months? It is a weekly publication, so.
How much is it?
Um, in your packet.
Is it the back road pub one?
Yes, it is the back roads one.
2,400.
2,400 is for a year?
Six months.
Six months. So it's $400 a month.
For two ads, because it's every other week.
Four, it's every week for four ads.
And so the ad itself is a banner ad?
That's on that one back page.
I think if we redo the banner maybe, but this doesn't really show anything.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. I, I agree that I'm for it, but it doesn't really show anything and, and, you know, maybe instead what we could sponsor by doing this, because I, I know that a lot of local people look at this, is maybe we could get, instead of a banner ad on there, maybe we could get something that says the Trinidad Tourism Board says to you this month, da-da-da, 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 go trails or any events or something to tell you about Trinidad or tourism, I don't know. What you, what you feel like we could average, because this is local, this is, this is educating your local people on what we have.
Not necessarily local. It is in the Welcome Center, it is in a lot of the shops, it is in restaurants. So you do have, and it's free, I just have a lot of people picking it up.
I said, instead of this, maybe if we could do something here that says something or something that you, that would benefit.
So this is where, again, this gets complicated a little bit, but I think would be better. If, it goes out every two weeks.
Every week.
Or every week, if Anisa could do something for each week of the year, maybe, or each month of the year. You know, something like one of the events that we're giving grant money to or, you know, the Trinidad, you know, the Blues Fest is brought to you by the Trinidad Tourism Office or the Rad Festival is being supported by the Trinidad Tourist Office or whatever those things are, then there's some meaning to it and then the community can see also what we are supporting. So I, I think that is a better way to use this money, but it has to be, you know, something that's going to be a little bit, needs to be thought out, planned out and submitted ahead of time.
Well, you know what happens with generic pieces like that is people pick it up and they look, nah, I saw that last month and it does, like you said, it doesn't link. So if you have something that changes.
Well, and visually, this is really boring.
Well, I actually saw it the other day and I was like.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay. Will he put a different ad in there every time now? He will?
As long as it's submitted in a timely manner so you can maybe, she could maybe submit four in one mailing, these are our four for this month or something.
Or for the next, you know, two months or whatever.
Well, when you're doing events, you want to get ahead of those events anyway. So if you have the Rad Fest in September, you want to advertise the Rad Fest for the full month of August.
Well, and I think this, you know, if we're, if we have heard do the various things that we're giving money to and that we're helping sponsor, that is beneficial. But it also helps our, if our businesses look at this anyway, to, for them to know what's going on. So maybe they'll be a little more responsive to the tourists coming into town because that's a bit of a problem.
It is, it's educating your populace. You know, because if we don't teach them, they won't know, why, why would they? Really, it's really a reflection of us if we, if we're not educating the local populace enough, so I don't know. I know the kiosk and other things will help that, but, you know, we're supposed to be the leader, so we have to figure out.
So an ad depicting an event when there are events.
When there are events.
Sponsored by the City of Trinidad Tourism Board and then the ad will reflect the event. When there's not events, we could, we could feature other activities that we have going on. So the motion then would be to have Anisa develop some ads ahead of time for your approval and go with a, what size, the little.
Burger and beer type size ad, fill-in form ad.
I think the burger and beer is whatever that size is, is actually much more eye catching than the banner ads, to be honest.
Yeah.
Si, or the new hotel, are you guys want to be advertising in it?
We, we may, it's, we, we may be advertising it. It's, it's a little local for us to advertise hotel ads in a, in a paper. Our broad would be beyond 50 miles to bring them into town, you know, but.
All the thing about it, like Marty said, there's people, this is in hotels and other areas and maybe some kind of advertisement. Next time they come into Trinidad, they'll know that it's a good one.
Yeah, I can see sunflowers, sunflower, go and pick up your sunflower seeds.
So probably we'd be back page or back page rather than inside?
Yeah.
I guess if we could get that, these might be people that want to pay, they're not going to give up anything too.
Yeah. Okay, I need a motion.
I motion to do whatever you guys just said right now, to do an ad on our events and do something different than what we have on the back page. I get Anisa to do that with your help, can you help her on that? Okay.
Second? I'll second, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I kind of already covered the destinations program slide, so you can skip that one.
Okay, very good.
Highway of Legends booklet reprint. So Highway of Legends, I put the booklet in front of you. That is the reprint that they're going to be doing. They are changing the map on the back page a little bit. As you notice, each one of the locations in the booklet has a number on it. And when they did the last reprint, they took those numbers off and they just included the natural intrinsic qualities instead. Our, our conversation has led to putting those numbers, corresponding numbers back on the map. Other than that, there's no changes to the booklet. And just FYI, this booklet is the one booklet that is the highest. There's more people taking this booklet out of the Welcome Center than any other piece.
How much do they want for this?
Uh.
Do I have it?
This is a combined effort.
It's a half and half between Warfino County and Los Anamos County. The cost is for 10,000, it's 5,539. And so splitting that in half would be about 20, I don't know, what is that?
750 or something.
2,700 for 10,000.
I believe the theme body is, I can see why it's picked up because it's an attractive piece.
Yeah, and.
It is a nice piece.
And it actually goes through all the separate entities on there, which is pretty.
All the different things on the Highway of Legends.
I would only recommend, I don't know if they're going to do any redesign, but again, like this little thing that has the Spanish peace country and our logo, it doesn't really say anything about us or what we do. That would be the only thing I would say is, you know, that.
They're not doing any kind of editorial reprint. They're just doing the reprint of the map with the numbers on it, everything else with the name. It just changes the cost of the publication significantly.
Oh, so they, so they already have everything, it's just the fold out that's getting reprinted and all you have.
So they're dividing this 5,000.
39 into.
Into two people.
Is there a motion on the table anywhere?
I'll make a motion. Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need to recuse?
Uh, you probably should.
Yeah.
Always better to.
I recuse.
Yes.
Go ahead. Any opposed? Okay. That's a lot of stuff, sorry guys.
Yeah, no, you, great.
That's okay, you're running real smooth, I get to go to work now.
One other thing is that next meeting's in February at 8. We talked about a work session, but we also talked about an annual work session.
A retreat?
A retreat. I don't know when would be good.
With a facilitator.
So Steve was supposed to be at this meeting to give us an update on that. Apparently he wasn't able, but he is working on a facilitator, a date and a location for us.
And who is that?
Steve, the city manager.
But I thought we picked a date last.
No, we never picked a date.
We suggested something soon, but we didn't pick a date. So I'll follow up with him, see what he's got going on and let you guys know what that's about.
We need a, we too.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
And it's going to be at night with cocktails, put that on record.
Then we can talk about something else.
I can sponsor cocktails.
I'm just kidding you guys, I don't drink, so you know.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second, anybody?
I second.
Thank you.
Oh, you do?
All for aye? Would you two say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
I was going to go over there.
I sent that to you.
No, you didn't, send that to me.